To go large fingers crossed.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Environment Committee meeting. Do we have any opportunities to ask? Any declarations of interest, anyone? I'll see if there are any that appear as part of our agenda just to be honest.
The symmetry might all end up in there one day.
Well, we never know. Item number three is to agree minutes of the Environment Committee held meeting held on the twenty eighth of July and the extraordinary Environment Committee meeting delivered first of September. Item number four, the budgets, will just take a moment to have a read through. And sit your hand up for any issues, Robyn.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for the chair. Four two eight two and four two eight five. It states those elements of the new cemetery are covered in income. Although we haven't got a, at some point, I presume from you chair, we'll get a grander breakdown of what that actually refers to. After it's been, I believe now it's in stage when the, the new cemetery should come before the committee. And I think at some point, I hope that we'll have a report on the breakdown of what it does so we can become actively involved in the decision that we've taken to build a new cemetery, which was the members' decision to do so. I don't know why it's not, it tells me what it tells me, but I think.
Income from one one zero nine.
Yeah, it tells me. It didn't tell everybody, Tom. And, and we should start scrutinising and, and, and oversight.
So if I've understood correctly, so the income that it says is that covers this particular line of expenditure is the, um, the loan income from the Public Works Loan. So that was a long sum, all that, as we'll recall, um, received, um, either this year or last year. Um, and the expenditure is actually on here, the total is on here. Um, it's from payments to leave from the payment schedule that came before full council some time ago.
Quite happy with that statement, but it's, no, it's now, I believe, project which should come under the Environment Committee to look at it unless we're going to scrutinise every committee or council, which has we need not committees. But I think that's something where it needs to come through a report because we've got a report on it due to the cemetery, that we have a discussion whether it comes here or not. If that isn't the case, it always had to be the case historically, but I'd like to know why it's changed.
Just clarify, Robyn, for my understanding, so you mean not necessarily the build of the cemetery, but the project coming forward, what happens with it?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, that's totally fair. Um, so as in once it's built, we would be.
Otherwise, we, we, you chair, we feel it's different to do something and then we'll wait. So, um, I'd like us to be actively involved with this information as it comes out. Seems a logical thing to do.
I think that was always the case that, um, once the builders and it, and it's up and running, that it will, um, transfer over from full council to Environment Committee. I don't think there's any doubt in that whatsoever. And that's, that's always been my understanding of it. And I think questioning it, um, at this stage of the build is, um, probably, um, not especially helpful to anybody.
And I think we can confirm that, yeah, once it's, once the cemetery's built, the, the running of it as a, as a project of the manager environment.
Yeah.
Yeah. As we build the building projects, that is, is, I'm thoughtful counsel, the cemetery itself, there's the operation on it, we'll, we'll come under this committee. And the, uh, the report that's here today to feed the agreements.
Is that clarified? Is that what your point was or have I completely misunderstood it, Robyn?
I, I think we are where we are with mixed memories of where we were. Um, I believe when we discussed it historically, that we felt that it would be here if we're going to do it, the finance is there in there, it's just that we, it's a lot of money. And we have a duty to oversee the expenditure. We don't have a duty to manage it because we took the decision how it was going to be managed. But we do have a duty to observe the expenditure in a more grander way. It's only since I looked at it and I thought, well, I've got more questions with that line than I have got now. And all I was trying to do was ask whether we'd have a further report covered it. I didn't realise we were going to have a discussion about who memorises what we did and what we did. This is a question I've got grown into something more than it wasn't.
Uh, it seems to me, and it always has, that the build of the cemetery is a matter for full council, the running of the cemetery, once it is built, is a matter for this committee. So I'm not entirely sure what it is. I don't think I need it explained again, but, um, I think that is pretty clear to me. So.
Well, that's one question. Why is it on budgets at the Environment Committee?
I, I can't answer that one. I didn't do the, the budgets.
In which case.
It was what was agreed at the preset meeting.
Yeah. In that case, may I suggest that we will, um, ask either for the next Environment Committee meeting, the next full council meeting, whichever is felt to be more appropriate, who have a breakdown of costs.
That's a disappointing. Do we have a budget line on full council? I don't think so.
No, the, the budget line has to be allocated somewhere and my recollection is that if kind of appropriate, because it's a cemetery and everything else is cemetery, that the cemetery line should start on this committee. So, for example, there are things that full council do. That's your time resources line because they have, it has to sit somewhere and, um, full council doesn't have its own budget lines. Uh, in terms of the expenditures so far, the expenditure is in accordance with the schedule of payments that was agreed at full council.
So do you just want to walk the report back?
I, 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 I mean, it's interesting, don't want to go on too long, Stirling, but, um, when I see a budget line in a committee, if I was sitting anywhere else, I'd be able to question what it was and what was spent on. Um, I'm afraid I sit everywhere else and that's what I would do. So it seems logical to me. You question it if it's on an Environment Committee budget line. If it was on another committee's budget line, you question that. It's just logic, what you do in, um, any other authority that I go to, that's what you do.
That we could have kind of broken down in terms of what we're managing spending so far.
Moved.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Could we move it to the environment?
Yeah, we need to go to full council. The, the build of the cemetery is a full council project.
Okay.
But there's no reason why it's finished so far. Can't go to, um, to the council.
So we can maybe suggest that as a journey or for the next full council. Anything else before we move on? Okay, five fees. Um, so to note that the roundabout sponsorship fees will increase by four point six percent in honor of August RPI. This is in line with. This is in line, uh, with August RPI. Uh, this is specified as part of sponsorship contracts.
We noted the message, Robyn.
I think it's approached that now that we increased the fees. Also would like to note that we had the roundabouts talk, it wasn't the councillor, Rupert Neil, who proposed that we cut the roundabout along the third place. So, and like I mentioned, county councils at the time didn't seem to want to do anything with them. So it was councillor, no, actually. I thought I might as well use my memory of facts.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, and then we have the, uh, report from our state manager for fees for Brack Road and Tindred Road Cemetery.
Yeah, so we brought this to the committee for agreement so that we can set our budgets, our preset budgets for next year. And it's the fees for both Brack Road and the Tindred Road Cemetery. Um, you broadly tried to do it how we have in previous years with the increase, increase of the latest RPI. Uh, we rounded some up and we reduced some of them as well. Um, so it's the most affordable, um, option is available as the cremation remains. Um, to try and keep the costs down as much as we can for local residents. And we've also included on there some of the new, one of the new areas that we're going to have on the, uh, Tindred Road Cemetery. Uh, which I will bring more information back to this committee, hopefully for the next meeting. Um, when we're still creating the detail with them around the, um, sort of new cemetery handbook. And a bit more explanation about what some of these new areas are. So we've, we've got a new, new type of area, so we've got child's area. And, but this area here is a new thing we're going to try out, a new cemetery, which is, um, individual sort of garden plots, so where you can buy either two or three plots in a small area that will be hedged off. Um, and we've sort of researched into what, what, where else this sort of thing uh, has been going on and when we've judged the price, um, you know, what we think is, is correct. Um, when we, so these areas are quite small at the moment, so for the double plots, there's going to be three and then for the triple plots, there's going to be two. Uh, just to see how, because it's quite new thing, that's just to see how they go, if they're popular or not. Review it in many years to come, whether they're popular or whether they sell or don't sell, and we can readjust in the future. Uh, but we wanted to try and set the budget, set the fees now so that we can create the budgets and set the budgets of all of them in the future.
That's what we've got there.
Yeah.
So where, um, where my great aunt is from, it's from Germany, they had sorts of family plots, quite, um, quite a special thing to be able to go and kind of see family, report together. So I think that's, that's really lovely. Uh, Robin there, Anya.
My first thing, thank you, Lee, for all that you've done on both boards. And it seems, but you have given it some really serious consideration and come to conclusions that you have. Leading the question. We, as we have the principle of agreeing what we might do with it is completely different than agreeing what the cost will be, which I think you'd accept. So when we're allowed to discuss the, um, principles of the cemetery in the future, we should be able to principal the cost because we don't know what they will be um, until we finish the bill. Um, but I think the fact that you thought about this now is a reasonable thing to do. Does that mean for the chair that we have, we can agree the principles of it as a committee now? And if not, when can, can we do it in the oversight if, because we've been told this under full council? So, um, is it a different issue because?
I believe the, the recommendation here is that we agree the cemetery fees as per Lee's report.
Yeah.
Because that would come under the management of the cemetery, so that would come under this council.
Yeah.
Right.
And on that note, I would propose that we agree with the recommendation. I'll second that and also add the, the, um, the proposed fees for the enclosed garden plot with two plots with space for four burials or enclosed garden plot, three plots with space for six full burials. Um, the, the, um, proposed fees are on the summary that Lee has produced for us, so it's, it's already there. So if, if we are, um, going to vote this through, that will be agreeing all those, all those fees, um.
Yeah, I understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I've seconded it. Sorry, let's make the vote. All those in favour? Uh, was again, any extensions? One extension.
Well, they can't behave on land. It's quite, quite fun, but can't afford it.
Okay, um, next one on the agenda is um, our climate emergency action plan, which is good to know there are updates to the climate emergency action plan. Nice to. Uh, let's move on to number seven, value of trees, to report, receive a report from, uh, councillor Haydock.
Uh, okay, so in this pack, there's a kind of two page summary note and then a slightly longer one, if anyone's got the time and interest of me, where where I got the information from. Um, it comes from a question that Robin asked about whether there is a there's a legal definition or a formula that we use to value a tree. So that you can then, um, kind of defend trees with it, or you can, you can get compensation if a tree is, is damaged illegally. Um, the short answer is there isn't a fine formula, a method, but there are a couple of methods that have been used successfully in court cases. Um, and this CAVAT method seems to be the one that's now in favour and has been used most recently, including in the Sycamore Gap tree and the one in a pub in Enfield that was sort of fell on it and they came up with some quite high water, really high numbers in, in my view for the value of those trees. Um, but most of the methods come up with quite low numbers for moose trees, so it has to be a special tree to come up with, um, you know, six figure numbers. So, um, I guess that's the sort of short answer, but then there's longer answers around, there are other methods that look at the value that trees bring to ecosystems, so they take account of carbon sequestration, the removing of air pollution, um, and, and flood alleviation and other things that we might be interested in. But it's, um, they tend to come up with quite low values. Uh, it tends to go to a high value once you start getting some sort of iconic tree in a particular place that, um, then, then has a value. So, um, I guess my, my suggestion is that we, we look at other ways of protecting and valuing our trees other than looking at all the trees in Buckingham, or even a section of them and try and come up with a, a formula and a method and use tree experts to, to derive numbers that we may end up never using, um. And I'm not there quite where we would use them anyway, because we're not the planning authority and therefore we wouldn't be the ones that were going after people that had cut down things when they shouldn't have done. So, um, I think there's other things we could do. I'm, I'd be quite keen to look at the carbon storage in the trees, because I think that would be an interesting addition to climate emergency plan and that's something we might want to talk about at the next in bottom committee meeting. Um, I'm, I'm wondering what else we can do, but I think a lot of the other things probably fit with the planning committee more than they do with this committee. Um, but, you know, I'm very much interested in ideas on how we can better protect trees, because I think we saw with the Candleford Court trees and I understand from quite a few developments in the past as well, that people are, are pretty quick with the chainsaw, um, and once it's gone, it's gone. And, and we don't appear to have, um, too much control or influence over that. So there's a few suggestions at the end of that, that second image in terms of, you know, if we can encourage Buckinghamshire councils and to scrutinise applications more than they currently do. Um, maybe more free protection orders. Although, interestingly, neither the Sycamore Gap tree nor the one in Enfield had a tree protection order, so even those iconic value ones don't seem exactly valid. Um, you know, maybe there's more we can do to celebrate and, and kind of talk up our fees and what we, you know, the value we have for them, that might the terror vandal or, or somebody that's the fee to, to cut them down. Um, you know, and, and the final point was, it's the more we can do around trees for flood alleviation. Because flooding is obviously a big concern for, for the town. Um, so far I've mostly heard about cutting down trees because they're too near the river, they're dropping things in the river, but it seems to me there's an opportunity to have more trees soak up the, soak up there as well. So, um, those would be the areas I would suggest that we look rather than putting a price tag on, on our trees.
Thank you. And I'd like to, can we minute our heads of, having developed these steps, it's really, really comprehensive, really committed. I've got Lisa, Robin, John, Roger, then Anya, and I've written it down.
So a couple of things, um, I was gonna, um, ask for our next three minutes, it's a really good report, so thank you, Heather. Um, also, I remember when, um, when I was chair planning, I asked for a rolling list of trees that were going to be removed or weren't being removed, um, so that, that's always been on planning agenda for anybody who wants to look or minutes now. Um, but I remember something that, um, councillor Roger Neil mentioned when we were talking about this on planning is that they've got root protectors, is that right, Roger? That they could put in these root protectors that would stop the roots from going towards houses that were quite often built after the trees were in. Um, so, yeah, I wonder if that's something that can be suggested.
Thank you. Robin.
Yeah, firstly, um, thank you, Heather, for taking it seriously. And thank you for looking into that. We did correspondence briefly on this topic, so it's good. It's a marvel, you got it here on the agenda and your report is here. I think, um, the points you raise are relevant, the ones around value of a tree being the environment and, and, and flooding issues. And how we take the major issue forward, which is to make the Buckinghamshire council more amenable to the concerns. It's a large question which perhaps we can talk about, but I have some thoughts on that. But I do think the value of what you've done is immense. And one of the things is like carbon uptake of trees, which is never valued, but when you take out a seventy, eighty year old, hundred year old tree, amount of carbon that sucks in, in it, in its year, calendar year, is far greater than a hundred quicks whatever sucking, um, that isn't recognised. And, and some of these things that you've put in here, I know knowledge amongst all people, but never seems to change the ambience of the way that we look at trees. But I think you should be absolutely tremendous to lay this out in a way which is understandable, a way which is concise. And thank you for taking the concerns I raised seriously enough to do it. And I fully thank you so much for actually undertaking this. I think it's tremendous.
John.
Yeah, I mean, one of the original prompts for this was the experience that we're seeing when houses have been determined to have some settlements, particularly on Page Hill. And the quick reaction of the insurance company, um, is to cut down nearby tree on the basis that it's that tree. That's called the government business, taking it without the ground, changing the nature of the ground and that's what's causing this problem with the house. And one of the ideas that we had was, this is a money thing, for the insurance company. And then if they were saying, well, okay, you won't, if you're deciding to cut the tree down, well, the cost of that tree is X. How much do you think it could cost to actually either put in root protection or to actually do a proper job on underpinning the foundations of the house? So that cost of the person that's there. Obviously, we, we, we don't have a role in that because unless the trees are the ones on our land, we don't own the trees, but the trees that have been cut down in Page Hill, I can think of a couple, um, were on trial council land. Um, so I think for me, the next step with this would be to send the report to the tree officer of the trial council and say, can we talk? You know, is there some way in which this can be incorporated in one of the tree planning? You know, the people, the people who have cut down trees or who have run this so many times, is there some way in which this can be incorporated? And secondly, could we also talk to them about the idea of sustaining trees? And say to the insurance companies, no, you can't cut that tree down. I'm sorry, it's not on because that tree is worth seventy thousand pounds. And if you do that out, that's how much risk are you on it? Because we have been discussed and so forth. And I think for me, that's the power of working, great stuff you've done, Heather. The other, the other aspect of it was the trees that got cut down on, on, kind of, kind of the court. It would be to do a retrospective valuation of those trees. And then rightly give us to say, do you realise how much those fees are worth? Because sadly, we live in a world where money talks. And even though all of us can't say we had enough trees to bits, and we look at those, especially this time of year, and just others are just, the hard problem that they're going through right now. And we know all the benefits to the environment if they do. What matters to some people more is the old, it's all news. And people say, you know, those three trees that were cut down next to the river, um, they were actually valued at a hundred and eighty thousand pounds. Just, you should know that when you make that decision. And I think, and I think that's something we might want to explore as well.
I admire your optimism on the value of trees, however, I feel, and me, perhaps my head up, may correct me that the value of the trees on our land may be.
I, I think it was two hundred, three hundred pounds per tree, perhaps. Only pure, that's the size and shape where they are, um, it's not in the thousands.
No, but it, it can, it can still make the point.
Yeah. I think, I, I, is that a proposal that you're making that we potentially pass the report? With, with Heather's consent, we pass the report.
Proposal, you initiate a conversation with the trial council's tree officer and maybe the wider planning department to say, look, can we talk about this in the context of the decisions made? Well, and also their, their, their estates department as well, where the citizens are making about trees being cut down or you know, by, by what insurance companies want to do and so forth. Can this be part of that decision-making process? And to have that conversation. So yes, I propose that.
I've just, I've got Roger, then Anya, in the room.
Okay.
What we could, um, following on from what Heather's said, is we could look at trees that have got high looking means abandoned, which is how they get a tree preservation order if they're under threat. Um, one of the drawbacks of that is that you can't set a tree preservation order on local authority land. So, the tree in this is owned by the council, so they don't, because you can't prosecute itself if it gets cut down. And the Sycamore Gap one, they normally have a tree management plan, but they've got to stay with the National Trust, so we wouldn't probably put on that either. Um, so that's, that puts us at the bit of the same advantage. Yeah, there are a lot of trees on highway land within, um, where I live, on the whole, there's three beautiful trees that were planted when the estate is built. And they're all coming into gold now. And if they return to the ground, it is a benefit to us, too. So I think it might be worthwhile over the long term, but it is us maybe as individuals just noting down, there are trees that we consider that are of public community value. And then perhaps at some stage, compiling with this and asking hot craft if he's got any, any thoughts as a very good tree officer. Um, but then as John had given to, the, the problem with the way that applicating the delta is is that if the, if the council see an insurance company, they just give the permission because they don't want to be sued, whereas what should happen is that there should be an investigation. So you should, if you're saying that your boundary wall is affected by tree roots, then you should actually see if the roots are there. And in Buckingham, it's mostly ground tea that causes these problems because it's a plan. And so it's, it's very rare that a tree will cause problems that they say are happening. But it's an easy way out. But yeah, but, um, what Lisa alluded to as well was, uh, you could put root barriers in. So if you say that uh, the tree roots are becoming within a meter or two of lands, which trees over there, they won't. Because it's very, very rarely spread beyond the tree crown. So you can say, well, to stop that, you can put root barriers in along the wall. And then give the expensive to put in. There's, there's, you know, it's there's a lot of things that can be done. The, for want of a better expression, if they're asked to do it sadly, because they can't. It's just cut it down, that'll be. And they don't replace them half the time either. So, yeah, thank you. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Anya?
I think I've kind of lost my train of thought. I think it's more or less been said what I was going to say, so I'll. Differ.
Okay, I've got Ruth for something then, um.
Yeah, one of my neighbours was telling me there was a beautiful huge oak tree that we were all really upset about. Being fouled up behind Pitchford Avenue. And um at the time, it hadn't been picked up, so it hadn't even come past the tree wardens or anything. And the other day, the neighbour was saying that they had done the root barriers there, trenches across the garden, everything like that. And he said, there was no need for the tree to be chopped. But it went ahead because it had already been agreed. So I was devastated when I found that out. Yeah. Okay. And then.
Um before, like, there's a lot of discussion about trees, but why do people cut trees? That's the first thing. If it's affecting somebody's property, then they want to protect that and they do it. Trees are planted by council, especially in the new built area, and the houses are also approved by council. So who's responsible for that? If trees are planted at the wrong place, which will affect the building in coming future. So I think we need to first understand that, you know, who takes the responsibility of this? Because if it's a wrong planning, then a house owner should not be responsible for that. There are so many people who are first time buyers, they don't even know what tree would do. After twenty years, they find out that is a problem. And doing any kind of treatment nowadays, the builders are not so cheap, you know, it costs a lot of money. They might not be able to afford it. So I think we need to have some logical thinking rather than just, okay, protecting trees is a good thing, we want to protect, but. This should be a trade off, right balance between both.
I can, I can understand your, what you're saying about uh developers. You know, the, the, they should be planting trees far, trees that are going to grow bigger, they should be far enough away from house, generally causing damage. Um a hundred percent, I think, you know, it would be ridiculous if you had a developer plant in an enormous oak tree. Two feet away from someone's house because it's gonna cause some disruption. Um. I would imagine as part of most of the planning applications, they probably do look at. I mean, Roger can probably give some advice on this, that they probably have some sort of guidelines about.
Trees that are familiar with this.
More, they, they wanted to build the uh flats where the uh garages are. And Catherine was saying it's by the canopy, like the branches are going to be hitting their windows.
Yeah.
And the house, they didn't care. So we were saying, you've got the woodland there, the canopies are there and, yeah. Before they lay on the trees already there.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Yeah.
See, if tree was already there, then they should not have got the permission to build the house.
But they do.
Which gave us, house or tree, you need to make a decision and then decide along. It's not like that I built out and the tree was there. From two hundred years, then tree gets the priority. But if house is there, you planted tree, it's affecting the house, then house gets the priority, simple as that.
Yeah, it doesn't work like that, unfortunately. Chair, could we ask people in order please? Sorry, um Robin.
Yeah. I think that my knowledge on this is, okay, historical, I remember when I grew up in the village. And this may have been pre out of our district council, to be frankly honest. Um the house which my family friends owned, um large house, we put an extension on it. And there was a massive big beech tree, um which still stands there to that. It's huge mass of copper beech tree at the bottom of the garden. And to put the extension in. The council at the time insisted that he put root protection into his property into the ground. It's costing absolute fortune. I remember him running about it, but didn't resent doing it because he liked the tree. Um and it's close to the property. So the, the idea that you can do these things has been known for a long time. Thinking where we go with it, and I know the tree officer won't have any ability to change policy. Um you will know that there's a consultation out at the moment on the preliminaries to the Buckingham. Plan, Buckinghamshire land, um actually out consultations, it's a bit linear, big bin on. Such environmental issues as this, and it's consultation on future development, how development will take place between twenty three years. Hasn't really got a major, hasn't got Buckinghamshire in it much at all, to be frank on this, but um but it um. It's one of these things about build quality stroke future proof that needs to go into a development plan. Because you can start, all the things that we know are common sense approaches should become policies in a development. I think maybe we need to draw down. When we, that planner believes going to come to council for consultation. Um um for us to respond on it, might be worth using that opportunity to comment in that consultation. About these elements that Heather's put together. The other point around it is. As for the interim point on how to do this, now periodically, there will be policies on. Growth and infrastructure. And some of them will go to the growth and infrastructure committee and some of them will go to the environment and transport select committee. It's probably enough, they often split these things between committees and there's never any to the lodging. So it could be that we need to take careful note of those agendas and. Noting John's concerns, which I think need to be expressed through Heather's thing, is that we pick that committee. Um the appropriate ones for written question to them, asking them how from this council. On how we would seek them to amend their policies to take it.
So Robin, are you suggesting an amendment?
I'm just getting an amendment to John's thing to try and have it so that we can have an action out of it, which has got some.
Robin.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify please? Um so you proposing an amendment to the, so John's original proposal was that we liaise with the tree officer at Bucks. You're proposing that we write a written question based on the facts that we have from Heather's report. To the next appropriate select committee.
Select committee, so that that can be questioned in the committee and it also raises it in a public forum. In a way that it's mitigated and the seriousness it cannot be, it can be referred back to. If we write it to an officer, they have no powers to change policy. So I hope that's a reasonable way forward. It is. Allowing this council's voice to be where it needs to be, which is at the point of the decision-making.
Do I need to get the amendment? That could be recorded, but if John agrees to it.
Well, I always thought if I agree to amendment, it's, it becomes, becomes anybody.
Yeah.
But, but we now have a decision that we need to make. But really amendment, you can all agree to it, but.
When I just asked Paul if John's proposal was seconded.
No.
Okay, so in that case you can, if it had been seconded, you couldn't have accepted it.
Oh, fantastic.
So um in this case.
So John's accepted the amended proposal, which is that we um. Write a written question to the next appropriate select committee, be it growth and infrastructure or. Um.
Or environment and transport, whenever it comes up, my view is that it's important that we keep ownership of this. So if Heather's willing to do the question, I think it's appropriate that Heather just question.
Um yeah, very happy to do the question. My, my only point was, couldn't we do both? Couldn't we send this, this report to the tree officer for their information and consideration and at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To ask the question at a committee.
I don't think, I, I'm, I'm happy with that, if that's a, a way forward, I'm, I'm just trying to get an action where we get a recording minute.
Okay, so we have. You have with that, John?
Well, yeah, because the proposal was seconded, I don't want to give.
Well, because, because, because it has, because it has. Because it hadn't been seconded, it meant that we could amend it without having to vote and repeat amendments. And that's why I was just paraphrasing with you, John, before we went for poster and seconded that. But now that the house has been seconded by France, that's proposed by John. That we forward Heather's report to the tree officer at Bucks Council and. And the councillor Haydock will also write a written report, I'm sure would support council staff free if requested. Um to the next appropriate selected committee.
Question, you don't just talk.
Not on this question.
But, yeah.
Okay.
So proposed by John, we're seconded by Fran. Ladies in favour? And that's unanimous.
Can I just ask who is going to pass that question in the select committee?
Heather, Heather, Heather's going to work.
It's a trophy that is heaven keeps it, we did, gives um all of this, it's Heather's report.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're great.
Uh move nine motion eight, which is one of mine. Um so I propose that we adopt a town tree and town. Animal insect as we want to call it. And so basically I attended a talk on butterflies um at Vincent Centre. And one of our local leopard doctors, which was really, really interesting. Um. And throughout that talk, um we discovered that the black poplar, which is. An increasingly rare tree, rare native tree, and there's only seven thousand thought to have in the UK, and we actually have quite a lot of them. In and around Buckingham, and there's a few of them on Hartlands, and there's a few others, Dr. Bell as well, I think. Um they can grow to thirty meters tall and they can live to up to two hundred years. Um and they are quite a beautiful striking tree and it wouldn't come at any cost to the council. It would be more of a kind of. We could just, if they give a press release on it, Buckingham's a doctor for this tree, um. And maybe kind of produce some educational stuff, work with the tree wardens, send some stuff out to schools. Um so that's kind of one of the motions, the second part is um about black hairstree butterfly. Which are an equally rare, again, native species of butterfly. Um there's only about fifty colonies left in the UK. And which are, are in and around Buckingham, again, because they thrive in areas with heavy clay soil and. They uh live almost exclusively in black soil bushes.
Hmm.
Um they are an endangered red list and a high priority butterfly conservation, and I think it would be really good. Kind of raise our awareness of being here and that's my proposal. Uh Ruth, Anya. Uh Heather, Roger, Robin.
Yeah, I went to the same talk as you and I'm very happy to second it.
Thank you.
Good.
I think it's a lovely idea. And um I'm extra pleased in this case that, uh you may remember that the town. Um gave me a tree to plant as my mayoral leaving present. And I think between Nina and myself, we have children, or Nina has proposed a um. Black poplar and I've been very happy to agree to that.
Fantastic. Uh Heather?
Um I, I'd be excited on himself and, and I, uh. Take, take me on board with, with butterfly. I suppose my only question with the tree was whether we have any wild black. Poplars here because it's the wild black poplar at the short top, the cultivated ones, there's actually quite a lot of them around, so. I wasn't sure whether we had a, a kind of wild native. Poplar or whether actually we planted all the ones we have, which, which might make it a little bit less appropriate.
I mean, there, there are mature black poplars and, sorry, again, heartlands.
Right.
I assume they were planted, but they have been there, they're quite mature. And I've also planted some young ones in Porty Park as well.
I mean, I don't think it's a showstopper, but I just wondered whether we actually did have some of these, some of these seven thousand.
It is something that I can certainly ask, um either my book or. I'm sure between, or in, between one of them, I would know. Um Roger?
Can I make a plea for another butterfly?
Yeah.
Um it's a small tortoise shell. And it's, it was very common. In everybody's garden until about twenty five, thirty years ago, it gradually died out. And although I like the black hairstree, they're not really an urban butterfly, whereas a small tortoise shell is. Um and it's spectacularly coloured. And we don't seem to see it anymore, and I'm sure when we were growing that, it's still low down. So I'd, I'd like to add that to the list.
Well, I'm pleased to know that, because I know that the black torch shell caterpillars do like to. Uh nettles are the primary food sources. And actually, in the St Ronald's Fields. Park or field, um I saw last spring, I saw quite a few small torch shell caterpillars there.
Good. That's. If you're seeing many around this year.
Yeah.
Oh, on, as I'm sorry, on Heather's point about wild black poplars. There, up they were, loads of them used to go along the River Tain through Islesbury. Um whether they're still there, I don't know.
No, no.
But that was a, that was like a hotspot and Buckinghamshire was quite a. Um one of the places in the country where it was, although it's a rare tree, it was quite common in certain parts of Buckinghamshire.
So, oh, very welcome. So is that, would you like that added on as a. Cause so the, the motion was about adopting it as an official town insect. Would you like that added as a, a second?
Two town insects.
Don't need black poplar trees, do they? Rather than these.
My only reservation would be that do we necessarily have a particularly high. Population of small torch shell butterflies in Buckingham.
Well, really, they, they, they're on the red list as well, so they're, they are pretty rare.
Yeah. But Robin then, and Robin then John then Anya, because I think that.
Yeah, I haven't planted them anything much, but um. In my time working agriculture, I was well aware of um what species you need to plant for hairstreaks. And I did make sure that I planted. Quite a mile of hedge rose in two different places, which had the appropriate plants put into them at the same time. They are a very complex breeding cycle. They lie on one thing and they need buckthorn and they need blackhorn. Weirdly that they lay eggs on one and feed on the other for some reason, um which is probably why they're quite tested. Uh I also um many, many years ago attended the butterfly thing. And it wasn't very similar to yours and it was very, that's why I ended up doing what I did. Because I'd attended this butterfly thing, I think there was a Mr Hodges who farmed down the road. Who asked me to go to it and I learned a lot about what plants you need. So we changed our planting. Um raising to suit the air streaks because they're, they are in this area. But there's a small colony down there. I hope H two haven't destroyed. Because they were in that area where H two is. Um so I always hoped that one day one fly up and lays some eggs on. The fields that I've got, I've got no evidence where they have, but they haven't. I also planted a load of black poplars. Um because we recognised them, my employer recognised them as a Buckinghamshire tree. And we planted them because they actually are very good in boggy, wet ground. And where we put them, there's a spring. And the last time I went down there, the hedge was adjacent to it. Was about twenty foot high and the black poplars were thriving. But the thing that we do need to understand, and I remember this from talking to. Heather, for another Heather when she was on the council, there are to knowing the female trees and the male trees. To make sure that we actually, they can self-holinate because that's one of the things, because I know she gave us. Before she left the council and the planting in the heartland, she brought a. Female or male tree, I can't remember which one, the crucial one.
The females are the rare ones.
The female tree because it needs to be there. So I think it might be something that. We look at getting hold of some of these because I think the male trees, it's something to do with. The planting, when you cut them off, because they're very easy to plant, you, you have a black popular tree, you, you cut off branches of it. You can take them away, you can stick them in the ground, and if it's in appropriate ground, most of them grow. Because they're related to the weather, they've got the habit of growing. So um. I think that's something that maybe we don't need to mend the motion, we need to actually find that we get enough. Female or black popular trees planted, and if we plant any, that we make sure we source females. Um trees because they are the ones that are short in North Buckinghamshire. Um for it, um and that's just, you know, one did have a, spending one's time pottering around doing a barn project once.
Thank you.
Um just for the fact that I like doing them.
John, then Anya, then Heather.
Obviously, I support the motion. I don't think anybody here is not going to support it. I'm not sure we need to have two insects though, Roger, because the idea is to have one for your wallet, so. We start adding that one, and add others, and I don't forget that for the Buckingham Town Menagerie. I don't forget that for the Buckingham Town Menagerie sort of.
Yes, right. It's a nice idea, however.
I'm sorry. No, it's going back to the last year.
Um, but I think the principle is to have one, but for, you know, I mean, giant tree and insect. But for me, this is just the starter point. Because what I want to see, once we agree this, completely agree, is what are you going to do with this? We can have a webpage and have it all information about it, right? We can do that, that's at least one action arising out of it. But what else? And I guess I'd I'd like to kind of challenge members around the table, what else could we do with this? You know, what, because if we're about you know, people to plant some trees, we're black, are we going to plant black poplars? You know, are we going to grow grass that the 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 black streak, but the hair streak doesn't particularly likes? Where? And I'm going to do that, you know, there there are implications that need to be thought through, I think. But in principle, I agree with it. But I don't agree with having a second insect, sorry.
That's fine.
Just, sorry, I wasn't doing anything ever. So my thinking behind this word to be agreed was that we can use it to um promote rare, not just the black poplar, not just the black hair streak, but we can use it to promote rare trees, plants, animals, insects in the town, um and kind of maybe do uh in the springtime or certain times of year in partnership with some local experts, because we've got some really knowledgeable people. Um, and that we can do, say, butterfly walks or, you know, tree walks, um
Do them.
That when we take over certain areas of land, potentially in the future, that we can plant things that will be beneficial to certain species of butterfly that we want to see brought back. So that's the kind of the long term vision, but obviously there's a lot more planning things to plan, and I think we need to be agreed for that to happen, but that that was where I'm thinking of going with this, John. Um, I've got.
Nice talk, Roger.
Yeah, Anya, Heather, Tony, and then we'll move to the vote, um.
No, no, no.
Well, I I I'm just going to say, I'm not, I'm my sport for tortoise, yeah.
I think it's my turn now.
Yeah. I mean, I know what they look like, which is probably the advantage.
Okay.
But hey. Right. I was suggesting we we move to the vote now. Because, I mean, I was going to make the same point as uh John was making about uh not having two, but it's been made and accepted. I think we can have a lovely conversation all evening about butterflies and trees, but um I just, I think we're ready to move to the vote.
As Tony hasn't spoken on this, yeah, I'll just.
I was just going to say that, so I've been involved a little bit with the summer, and I've done a month, a month of butterfly surveys up there. We've also done lots of uh in correspondence without meadow surveys, so they do know what goes with what. So it'd be maybe good to engage them in this as well.
Okay. Really, really quick? Just as I, I've looked on butterfly conservation and the black hair streak is endangered and the small quarter tortoiseshell is only least concern, it's on the red list, but it's of least concern, so I think that's very.
Was was Roger's amendment step we did?
No, no, that was a bit normal.
But you were calling it.
More tortoise, yeah.
An addition.
The tortoise shell will have its day, but it just won't be tonight.
Okay.
Um, in that case, let's move to the vote. Thank you all very much for your patience, because I could talk about this for hours and I realised that not everyone else there can. Uh, so
Oh, we can.
So proposed by myself and sent it by, now for the renewal, um. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. Thanks very much, everyone.
God bless you, Torches.
Uh, remember our CCTV update, Lee.
Okay, so it's just, um, job type members on a meeting a couple of weeks ago with um the electronic surveillance manager from Buckinghamshire Council and the ten local terms value includes November two. And I was looking at CCTV coverage for Buckingham. Uh, Buckinghamshire Council have reviewed their policies and coverage across the county. Um, and whilst doing that, they're looking at providing four to five new cameras in Buckingham. Um, so the ten local police were obviously very happy with this. And so they're they're looking to concentrate on the town centre. Um, then connecting it to their control centre within Mywickham. Uh, so the place can contact them and look at the footage whenever they want. Uh, so we had a walk around town centre, the police hall, but I thought the problem areas were. Um, but this may, could mean that our two redeployable cameras um could be reused and relocated elsewhere. Um, if if we wish, um, so we we have a possibility of sort of relocating our redeployable cameras. Um, which is which is very positive.
Hmm.
Um, so they've gone away to investigate all the locations and possibilities and um all the stuff involved with setting up those cameras. Uh, so that they're still being on mainly on light lighting columns, but they're fixed cameras, um which means there's four or five, I think, on each, on each, um uh unit that can direct and study on each unit, so they're they're quite good sort of system by the sound of it. Uh, so once we get more information, I'll report to this, back to the committee. Uh, with what they come up with.
Excellent.
I'll just want to update.
Right, I I think technology is a bar, because I can remember sitting around this quite, so when we were going to have a cable from Alicebury to Buckingham to run the CCTV, which was stationed in Alicebury. And I even went down there and looked at the CCTV cameras, and there was even a box, where are Buckingham when we're going to be? The district council pulled the funding, so we should agree them. The only thing I do concern, the the only camera they've ever put in recent years is being quite problematic. And the R, the camera on the um opposite the R jail, which um seems to find people at a regular basis and with, when we've done events and and the fact that will they know where Buckingham is when they're in Mywickham? Um, and will they know which street they're looking at? And will they know that, when they're like, sort of, on the camera at Buckingham, as they know? Um, because I did worry that that will we get to see what's in it? And if they're putting where they're put, I think we do need to have an input into the sighting of them. I'm not a hundred percent sure that people in Mywickham would all would know the best places. And I'm not a hundred percent sure I'd know the best places in Mywickham.
I believe, and they'll correct me if I'm wrong, that it was local, the Labour policing team that went round and sighted where they thought the best places would be, rather than offices from Mywickham.
But I still think I'd like to know the sites, even if it's in a competition.
I believe Lee's going to bring a report back to the next meeting.
And you tell me who the officer is. But because it's being funded by Buckinghamshire Council, there's been no um local member report on the funding committee, so.
And I suggest we shouldn't name officers in making.
Yeah, maybe.
I'm not saying we're going to name the, I didn't ask to name him, I said come out. Completely different. And if I wanted to name an officer, I wouldn't do it. Um, but um, but um, I was never been so challenged, um, in the past. But I do think it is, I did worry that there needs to be a Buckingham input to this. Um, judging by when the camera went in, opposite the old jail and the problems it's caused.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin. Um.
I welcome this, um, having lived in towns um thirty, forty years ago, um, which had very good CCTV systems, um Maidenhead um being um the one that comes mostly to mind, um thirty, yeah, nearly thirty years ago, when I was in Maidenhead, and they they had some really, really good um systems operated by um the Royal Windsor Maidenhead um Council, um. I think Robin is probably being unfair about the um the traffic camera, which is sighted opposite the old jail, which is um to um try to alleviate moving traffic offences, um i.e. people going the wrong way um down a one-way street, um. This is a different thing altogether. This is, this is to protect the general public um from um crime, fear and disorder, which is sort of like, I don't know if Thames to Empano Police are still using that, um that catchphrase, but they certainly were um going back a few years ago, um. I'm sure they know where where trouble hotspots might be, where where they think that they need to um cite it to get the best coverage and to um to do so. We did have input on um on the sighting of um the other camera, which um councillor White brought to this meeting. I remember sitting here discussing it, and I remember saying that I thought that they'd be better off putting it at the bottom of Addington Road rather than there, I thought that was more of an issue. Um, so we did know about that one going in, um, I will commit, and I think that um hav- having our cameras to now be redeployable somewhere else and not relying just on our cameras um is um is a really positive step forward, and it's it's it is something that um that we need to be coming to terms with.
And John, Anya.
I would only ask that when it's introduced that there is some mechanism put in place to evaluate their effectiveness. I think if you're going to spend money on on expensive kit like this, the purpose of um reducing crime or reducing the fear of crime, which can be extremely important. And it needs to be having upon the public services that do that to evaluate it. Does it actually work? We all think it works, and there's there's mixed research on this. Um, let's evaluate it, let's ask them to evaluate that and make that part of the project. It works, probably, but we can at least ask you, because in this council, at least, we can believe in energy space practice. And therefore that means you've got to do the research to say, yes, we did this because I looked, we don't do that because I don't know. You've got to do the research to be able to make those judgments.
Thank you. Please, I've written it down, so it's, yeah, it's in hand. Anya and another.
Yeah, no, I was just going to suggest, I think at this stage, we are just being asked to receive the report.
Yeah.
So, uh, and I think it's, I'm very glad we've had it. Looks like a promising thing, so I suggest we receive the report and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
You'd already said.
But thank you for.
Okay.
Agree. Um, moving on, so we have a report from the Business and Community Engagement Officer about energy advice drop-ins. Um, so this was, uh, is it right, I can't remember. So this was a really good meeting, the um uh was the brainchild of uh Heather, uh who contacted um the lady from Buckinghamshire Community Energy, and she came to meet in um with um Heather, myself Clark and the Business and Community Engagement Officer, we discussed how Buckinghamshire Community Energy can help the people of Buckingham, um they're incredible, they're charity, aren't they? They're they're a racial charity, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, racial charity, um also received some grant funding, um and we came to the agreement that they would offer energy efficiency dropping sessions. Um, the free dropping sessions, the sessions would aim to help residents to save money on their energy bills and maintain warm homes during colder winter, colder months. They can offer free warm home assessments, where one of their energy assessors will go out to someone's home and do a full warm home assessment and advise um anything that can maybe be done. Obviously, we live in a historic town, we have a lot of old buildings, old single glazed buildings that don't have the best heating. I'm sure we can all think of at least a few houses around the area that, you know, are quite cold or expensive to maintain. Um, so Buckingham Community, Buckinghamshire Community Energy said that they are going to do one, two dropping sessions. Um, one on the eleventh October and one on the fifteenth of November, they can use the shop mobility um building in Paul's Meadow Car Park, and that will run from one till five. Um, attendees will be able to receive advice and free energy saving kits, um. And we are also going to generate some flyers um which will be available to uh councillors, so that if there is someone you know, possibly someone that you've done casework for, or someone that you're aware of that does struggle to heat their home, or is living in a particularly old building that, you know, could do with a bit of assistance, that we can post a flyer through their door to kind of raise a bit of awareness. Um, and obviously it's going to be going on social media and things as well, so, yeah. Um.
Noted. Thank you.
Noted, thank you.
Yeah.
Don, for that.
I I just want to emphasise the importance of the message this. I mean flyers, yeah, but how many, to whom, when and how, and the first one's happening this Saturday. The thing to, you know, that's only a few days, so one of its. Um, and I think when you sort things, get the message out there is really, really, really important. Um, and I just think there's a real, I believe, if people were to distribute the stuff as well, it's advice. Say, well, if you're asking for fuel quality, um and 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 getting in touch with those people would be really important. But that's all killer, I say, some of this is about the price of fuel. Um, and the reason that, the reason that people can't afford to heat their homes is because the prices of fuel is too high.
Yes. Um, quickly, Robin, and then show.
Games on the agenda, I think that is it is to note, and I think that, I think it's important enough that um that we've only got now until the eleventh. It's that we at least do some um social media around this, um building on for press release for the that's the November date, that we could perhaps to organise with the chair, vice chair to do the press release around the autumn date, the November, where we've got more time to plan that. The fact that it's on the agenda now is because the way the meeting's run, it could have been on the agenda, I'm sure weeks ago, we'd had Environment Committee, that's not the fault of the date, it's the fault of the gender band timing. So I hope that that can be done, that there could be some social media now and a and a press release around the Saturday.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Not, obviously not for the old table.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we get on the, um, just a little social media, Connor.
Yeah.
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 I mean, the the Business and Community Engagement Officer's good for this plan, I think.
Yeah. Culture catch is fantastic. Um, come on, we have them on, we've got another call. Oh, sorry.
Um, just an offer, I'm happy to take fires over to Citizens Advice and also for the next G three A open meeting, because I think there'll be quite a lot of older people that are in that situation. And they will probably not be the ones that necessarily are using social media and therefore
Yeah.
probably physical flyers might be a bit more used to them. The other thing we talked about was dropping through the school letterboxes, but it is quite hard to do that without kind of targeting the people that have got an untidyified garden or something, you know, you don't, you don't really know how best to do that without doing an enormously flip drop, so.
It is a repair cafe this Saturday as well, so if there are some flyers that can be there as well, that um that might help them to spread the the word.
Uh, next, I turn the agenda, we have another report from our Community Engagement Officer uh about Buckingham Town Council joining the Hedgehog Heroes' Royal Honour. Um, uh, the members are asked to note Buckingham Town Council has joined the Hedgehog Heroes' Royal Honour, maintained by the British Hedgehog Preservation Society, um which is said to move um ordered free stickers from the B H P S to be applied to any uh mowing and strumming equipment, which is used by the green spaces team, so that they are all um reminded to check for hedgehogs um whenever they're doing any sort of strumming, mowing work to avoid any accidents, um or injuries for our hedgehog population. Um, but no costs, stickers provided free of charge, and it means that we now own the Hedgehog Heroes' Royal Honour.
Noted.
Um, I know it would be a dot, you know, hedgehog, um as a animal subject town, um.
No, you you're already booked.
No.
You would have, you would have to do a gender writing for the next environment.
I know, I quite like, I, I would just be, um, but I will say that it it's it's also that the the people haven't got very tidy front gardens, yeah, jobs quite like them. Um, in the sense that they've got all the little grubs and bugses.
And birds.
And bad gardens.
Hmm.
Yeah, and um, and you, if you just leave an area in your garden unmanaged, that's probably what helps the hedgehogs as well, you know. Um, we all try to leave some unmanaged garden, um.
Thank you, Robin. Lisa.
Thank you. Um, are the other um people that are doing the grass cutting from the Shire Council, do they provide by checking for hedgehogs, or is it just us?
It's only us that are doing this, but.
Okay, that's a shame, because it's not just us that cuts grass here. So whether it can be forwarded on to them, because it'd be a shame, say, they do massive patches of green spaces where yeah, I think you.
Okay, um, so moving on, we've got the action list. Okay, um so moving on, we've got the action list.
And there are no opening zones outside of schools, are we um looking to. Revisit that now that um the schools are back and the weather's starting to.
Yeah.
Would that be an idea to, to um.
Yeah.
Um outside of this meeting, get back together and um.
Yeah.
And do another, another survey, recontact.
That is an idea, yeah.
Um link, link to that is on the agenda for the um Climate Cafe tomorrow evening. If anybody is interested, Climate Cafe, eight o'clock at the lounge.
They're coming. Robin.
I'm just um noting the things that stood on the action list, which Heather's tried to address. Um which is six, two, three, two, three. Um noting that we've discussed. Um that tonight, should that be added to the action list? Um so that we can um monitor that actually, and aggression of that subject. Because it fits in very well with six, two, three, two, three, one, nine, eight, five. Um I think it fits in very well with that. Um we may have some informations on that. The.
That's normally the way, isn't it, after something's.
It was all right if I, I'm not talking, or shall we just stop? Well, you can say what you like. Um anyway, the other point is, are we going to progress the. Um the motion to sit in motion, as we had the first down school go out and do. The survey, does that stay on here or is that going to?
Seating, um that went away to members who were going to um. Uh.
Survey the rest of.
Yeah, members were going to survey the rest of the season that wasn't directly located in the town centre. Um however, that hasn't happened as of yet. Um I've dropped a ball on that one because I uh said that I would help with that and I haven't had time to do it yet. But it is, it was discussed at the um agenda planning meeting and I did say I would kind of invest more time into it.
And the other point was on the Environment and the States nine-stroke-fifth being sports pitch provision. Which seemed to have got wrapped up with the Buckingham neighbourhood plan. Where there was an ongoing discussion around um section one O six and sport provision. It seems to be a full stop on that then, um until sort of time, because we have a lot of money in section one O sixes. Which we took long enough to get to here to discuss. And it wrapped up within that. So that took um several months. So I'm just wondering whether that means that we can't discuss that until after. The Buckingham neighbourhood development plan's gone out referendum. But that might mean we don't discuss the money, which is in those pots of money, and that means it might go. So um I need some advice on what that actually means inside that thing. I don't remember. Being um being N D P, being part of that discussion. It was an ongoing discussion around um. Sports visions and, and section one O six, and where it was also, there was the request. About redeployment of that money, which we came to camp, came to discuss. And if we can't discuss that, we won't be able to discuss the redeployment of that money, which there needed to be a piece of paperwork really to do it. So. I wondered what that actually, why that's added to it, because all these discussions around those things are ongoing. The, the world doesn't end and begin because we've got a neighbourhood development plan going. All these other things are constant and fluid. And if um, I just wonder why it's been added in there as a full stop. Um having issues with other things not being discussed.
So is the actual part of historical correspondence and agreements would be reviewed by the town clerk? Update, not to review following your new assessment. Um I don't have an answer for you, I'm afraid, Robin, because I don't know what the clerks um. Progress is with that particular item. Um I wouldn't like to speak on her behalf because I don't know. I'm going to give you a false answer, so that's something that I'll have to take one email.
Well, I'll, I'll, I can give you all the correspondence on it, um which dates back to god knows when. Um.
I'm sure.
And um and it took me long enough to get it to actually be, and now finding the thing means we can't discuss it. And it was a very important issue around what we actually did with funds. But I'm not sure if that's, if I'm going to be advised that isn't the item there, um because it was around sports provision. Um perhaps the wording there doesn't help me. It's so brief, so um whatever, it just looks like it's got a large full stop on it.
Robin.
Um just to clarify, with sports pitches, in the neighbourhood plan, there's nothing. Allocated because we can't. And the other thing was that we took money. From Lays Hill for an all-weather pitch at Burney Park.
Right.
But Buckingham doesn't need another all-weather pitch. So this money is hanging about there. And if the, if it needs to be spent. And there needs to be a um revised legal agreement, the Lays Hill developers. To spend it elsewhere, otherwise they get it back.
Yeah.
Um so I don't know how far that's gone, but that's.
I believe that comes under planning rather than environment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying with the sports pitches.
And it comes, it comes into.
In which case, can we go and establish what, what, what it got to do with the Buckingham neighbourhood development plan on the Environment Committee?
I was just about to suggest, so I'm sure email the clerk and I'll see if you win and we'll.
But I can, I can go anywhere in my time and discuss that and I will do it.
Anything else for the action? Um please, Lucy, um. Chair's announcements. Um say it's the next meeting, Monday, September fourth in Denver. Um so. I can firstly commence private session.
Agreed.
Agreed.